County Commission, we'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll go ahead. There are meeting documents available for review down next to Commissioner Heiburger if you need any. Just a reminder to silence your cellphone and Craig or Carol are here this morning if you need a listening device. That takes us to our routine business. First item is to consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So move. Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Second item is to approve the commission meeting minutes for December 8th, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Bennega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next item are bills to be paid in the amount of $3,561,672.17.
Pay the bills?
These are the bills.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments? Commissioner Barth?
I'm sure. Notice that we had this week $55,000 in outside attorney's bills for mostly for public defense, it looks like. There were 12 over $1,000, including one for nearly $20,000. We also had four funerals for $10,200. And we had 2.9 million remitted to the state for motor vehicle registrations. There were also over 200 individual bills for mental illness, an issue that many people don't recognize the county has anything to do with. That was a big expense. I think they totaled $50,000.
Thank you. Yeah, just a good overview of the breadth of issues that we cover here at the county and highlighting some of the folks there are definitely. This is a difficult season for folks that are struggling with mental illness and COVID just exacerbates that. So, thank you. All right, any other comments? We have a motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. There are reports there for review. We've got the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Report for November, the Minnehaha County Register of Deeds Statement of Revenue for November, and then we have the Auditor's Office Report. Is there anyone here from the Auditor's Office this morning to review that report? Not seeing anyone. Obviously, the report shows a huge spike in general fund cash reserves, which is primarily related to the CARES Act fund reimbursements that we've been receiving recently. Are there any questions or comments on any of those reports? All right, that takes us to item five, Personnel Actions. I'd consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is to consider a resolution establishing elected department head annual salaries for 2021. Carrie Devert, sorry. Good morning.
Good morning. Last week, we talked about department head salaries for those who are elected and discussed new base salaries going into 2021, and then salaries for the actual individuals serving in those roles. And this week, we're asking for formal approval of the resolution.
Thank you. Are there any questions? I know we did have an opportunity to have a good discussion on this last week. There are no comments or questions. I'd entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Make a motion. Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. It takes us to item six, Abatements Recommended for Approval. Good morning, Chris.
Good morning, Commissioners. Before you today, we've got eight abatements. They're kind of in two subgroups. The first four are South Dakota Game Fish and Parks has acquired property mid-year, so those are authorized for abatement. The last four are flood properties up in Dell Rapids that due to the flood, we sent appraisers up there and verified the damage right away when we got notification. So I'll go through these here. The first one, item A, is South Dakota-
The second, Chris, could we just go ahead and do a motion and approve the first set of the abatements, A through D?
Do you want me to read them out?
Sure. If you want to read the parcel ID numbers, that'd be great.
Okay. First one is parcel ID 16617 for an amount of $874.68. The second one is parcel 16610 for abatement amount of $419.09. The third is parcel number 16622 for an amount of $571.20. And the fourth one is parcel number 16621 for an amount of $790.96.
All right. So if we could take those game fish and park ones, is there a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Bennega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you. I just thought it'd be easier. We could do one group at a time.
Yep. And the last four, again, as I'd mentioned, these are all flood plain impacted properties that did flood, and the city has reviewed those. Our appraisers have reviewed those and determined the loss of value at the time of the flood, and so we're recommending the abatement for the amount of taxes that would have been due had it not been flooded. So they're all impacted. They're all on, they can't be rebuilt now. So the first one is for parcel number, for Shirley Martel, excuse me, ID number 21870, property tax in the amount of $288.42. The second one is Shirley Martel, again, parcel number 22336 for an amount of $481.59. The third one, again, is Shirley Martel, parcel ID 22337 for an amount of $356.82. And the last one is for Gregory and Jenny Ammon, parcel ID 62292 for an amount of $336.57.
All right. So we have these broken out into two different motions. So if we could take the Shirley Martel parcels, the first three that Chris listed off, are there any questions about those for Chris?
Move approval.
Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. And then the next, the last one would be the abatement for Gregory and Jenny Ammon, ID 62292.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions? Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Chris. All right, that takes us to item seven. First, under seven As, authorize the auditor to post notice of a hearing on December 29th, 2020 to consider supplement request to the 2020 budget. Kim Adamson. Good morning, Kim.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Adamson from the Auditor's Office. And I have for you this morning notice of a budget hearing scheduled for Tuesday, December 29th, to consider supplemental, supplement adjustments to our 2020 budget. We have a list of several general fund departments who have requested budget supplements, as well as a supplement for the Highway Fund this year. The total supplements for the general fund are $838,000. Within that list of supplements include COVID expenses of $373,500, and a budget supplement for the Highway Department of about 3.3 million. Again, I'm just, I'm seeking authority to post a notice for this hearing to be held at the end of the month.
Motion to post notice.
Motion?
Second.
In a second. Any comments or questions? I'd note that there wasn't kind of an updated memorandum that was provided by Highway, and I know DJ's here today. If anybody had any questions for him, he'll be around to answer questions before the hearing next, the last meeting of the month. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? Roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, takes us to item eight, Planning and Zoning Notices. There are none. And takes us, and then item nine, there's a petition for compromise of lien. Good morning, Melinda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Melinda Storley, Commission Office. Before you is a request for compromise of lien. The action requested today is to compromise and release lien DPNO 28736 with a balance of $7,422.69 in full with no payment or with an offer of $4,193.64 to settle the lien. That's 50% of the lien. The petitioner explains the circumstances of the lien in his narrative, and that he and his wife are primarily purchasing a home that will help meet the ADA needs of their adult son who's in their care. He and his wife have found a buyer for their current home, as well as this new home for the family, and are expecting to close December 18th on both real estate transactions. He is self-employed and reported an adjusted gross income of $95,409 on their 2019 income tax and owe $8,277. The financial statement lists assets totaling $358,568.40 and liabilities totaling $207,092.77. The petitioner is here to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. So the petitioner, you, just a first sec. Does anybody have any questions for Melinda before I give the petitioner opportunity?
If I may.
Yes, Commissioner Karski.
Why is Lincoln County so prevalent on these financial, I should have asked earlier, I'm sorry.
I don't know. He just happened to have made all of his payments and that were applied to the Lincoln County charge versus the Minnehaha County charge.
Okay. But it was the same incident, or was not?
No, two different incidents, yes. Minnehaha was first, and then the Lincoln County. I don't know if the Lincoln County was a court ordered payment or not at this point, so maybe he can help answer that question.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, so petitioner, you're welcome to say anything that you'd like to. You don't have to say your name or your address, but if there's any comments that you have, if we want to try to answer Commissioner Karski's question, that'd be great.
Yeah, that was another incident. I have no idea why that payment is even showing up here in Minnehaha County. I believe that I had paid this. I fully believe that I paid all of this off. I fulfilled all my obligations to everything. It caught me out of nowhere. This just happened this last Friday here, not two Fridays ago, no, last Friday. Didn't even know this was out there. We closed on our house this Friday. I mean, look, this was 27-ish years ago. I'm not even the same guy anymore. You know, I did have some troubles after that. I met a girl and made a life, and then this comes up again. I paid for this already. I paid for it more than I should have. Cleared all charges, and actually the circumstances of the case, they found out that it was a problem with the other person's car that was the cause of the wreck in the first place. So, I mean, in my opinion, none of this given is ever taken into account. I really don't have much else to say on that, but, you know, I'll respect you guys' decision, and thank you for seeing me today.
Thank you. Commissioner Karski.
I'm curious why this wouldn't have come up when you bought your first house.
Those were a lot of questions that I had, too. We've done two refis. We took out two mortgages on that home as well. I mean, again, 27 years, I've gotten a ton of loans, a business loan, I mean, everything, and this has never came up. And looking back on some of these records, it looks to me like there's a lot of auditing errors. And in the diligence of the current auditor, they probably share something. So to me, I think something was missed.
Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Bennega?
Those are good questions, Commissioner. I guess the other thing that I have a question about, has Lincoln County cleared their lien on this house or not? It seems like there's a confusion about who's got the lien and for what amount, and where the payments were made.
No, the Lincoln County lien has been paid in full. He meant, all those payments that are applied on this lien summary were applied to Lincoln County, and then he made some additional payments that were then applied to Minnehaha.
Right.
So in total, the lien fee for Lincoln County was $2,178.60. The payments applied to Lincoln County were $2,178.60, leaving $50.70 that were applied to Lincoln, to Minnehaha County.
I guess to me, the reason it's confusing, from '96 or '98, the payments were made to Lincoln County, and then just within the last few years, not few years, 2003 through '04, Minnehaha County. Do you think we could lien Lincoln County for half the? I don't think we want to make it any more confusing.
Any other questions? Commissioner Heiburger?
It's probably not a question that gets answers, but the amounts that those little partial payments are, or those mistakes that were found that ended up, because I can't imagine if the amount of payments, I looked at that earlier, the amount of payments that were made earlier, and then all of a sudden, there's an $8 payment, there's a $16 payment, I don't see you paying an $8 payment when you'd been paying 175 and 140. And so then it just makes me wonder if some of those were mistakes that were found in the Auditor's Office that, oh yeah, we better credit these. I don't know.
I mean, they say their collection, two of them are collection fees.
In regard to the petitioner stating that there were errors by the Auditor's Office, initially when this lien was pulled up by the Auditor's Office, it appeared as if though the payments that, the payments that I list in blue on the lien summary were not marked Lincoln County. However, there was a note in the lien summary in the comments section that defined those as payments to Lincoln County. And then when they entered the payments that were in the black, they marked Lincoln County on there as payments for Lincoln County. So that's where the confusion initially came in, in that, well, if those payments were for Lincoln County, why were they applied to Minnehaha? But they were never applied to Minnehaha. They were defined as Lincoln County payments. So in the end, the lien summary stood as it was initially, at the balance of $7,422.69.
Comments, questions?
You're confident that the lien in Lincoln County is cleared?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Karski.
That, pardon me, that was confirmed with the Auditor's Office.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, I've read and reread your narrative, and it really moves a person. You know, I can understand why you would be probably feeling the way you are. Something bad happened. You were given a public defender. The public defender did a good job, and you were acquitted. The taxpayers of Minnehaha County pay for the public defender. And it's just going back so far, and a lifetime ago, literally. I'm in favor of compromising this lien. I'm just struggling with the dollar amount I want, and I, I don't, I think half is too much. But I'm still trying to figure out what is the correct amount. I'll tell you, when I read through it, I had the same, I'd say emotional ties. I think we ought to compromise the lien with no payment. I'd second that.
Motion in a second. Any other comments, questions? Roll call vote, please.
Bennega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for taking the time to come down today.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. All right, so this is our time for public comment. If there's somebody here today for a public comment, this is your opportunity. Come forward. Good morning.
Hi, I'm Stephen Siano. I was here before, and it looks like, from what I see, we've got a serious unseen enemy, and it's not what you may expect. The virus is second to the fear and the fear mongering, the misinformation involved. And when people act on basis of fear, they are liable to be led off a cliff or into some other bad situation. I don't trust the medical industry and the pharmaceutical industry, which backs them. And this was written about by Dr. Mendelssohn in the 80s, and others have shown this to be the situation of politics over medical and science. It endangers all of us. We don't know what's, what might be injected into our bodies and what it might do to us. We don't know what people are up to. Like I told the city council back in, I guess it was May, there is apparently a, another agenda going on here, and the vaccine promotion has turned out to be it. Now, I said that, not revealing that I had had this virus. I know how bad it is. I had it in March, and yeah, it almost killed me. But I've been through bad situations. I have a breathing problem anyway, as well as spinal problem and other medical problems. I have been denied my needed medical care and psychological care since my breakdown in the Navy in 1978, March 2nd. It's on the naval record, and people have been covering it up, medical industry's been covering it up. Because politics trumps healthcare, or proper healthcare, this is what I've been up against, and many others are as well, and many can learn. I accompanied somebody to, through some surgery, and there was, then there was some, you know, to give another person's position. Somebody had some surgery locally here, and there was a couple infections involved, and I followed her through, and then they did an x-ray and found that she had a couple of lumps. And they removed the lumps, did radiation, and everything was so, just fine. But she was so complicit and eager to go along with them, that then they were promoting a double mastectomy, which is further endangering her, was not medically indicated. I made that point to the oncologist, and she agreed with me, and that was it. So, hey, I do my homework. I know how the vaccines are supposed to work by simulating the natural immune response. We all have immune systems, and the best way we could deal with this is actually with supplementation or proper medication to treat the illness when it hits us. There's no basis, no logical basis, and actual, perhaps harm caused by the mask mandate, as the city has imposed, and I have a medical exemption from, but it doesn't matter. I shouldn't need it. There's no right. And there's some possibility this is a globalist takeover agenda, and, you know, but aside from that, it's just not indicated, and it's not in our best interest. And I do think that, I understand the county has power over the city.
Did a wrap up here. You've got about 15 seconds.
Yeah. And I think that the city, city council and mayor have done some stuff that is unlawful, and I think that the sheriff or state attorney should get involved, go after them for what they're doing to us, under the guise of protecting us. It's a hoax. I don't trust, we gotta check it out for ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else here today for public comment? All right, seeing none, then we'll take, that takes us to regular business. Item 10 is to consider a motion to authorize unused personnel services budget appropriations to be used for the Department of Equalization, Air Guard, and Highway Construction operational budgets. Kim Adamson. There she is. She's back.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Adamson from the Auditor's Office. As you'll recall, we have an internal budget policy that requires department heads to request special authorization if they need to use personnel savings to meet their budget goals for the year. And so this year, we have three requests. The first, from the Department of Equalization. They want to use personnel savings of about $25,000 to fund the purchase of a vehicle replacement that was not included in the original budget. The second request comes from the Air Guard. They want to use about $27,000 of their projected $70,000 in savings, and that is to offset the cost of some uniforms and equipment that was reimbursed under our Air Guard contract for the year, for the contract year that ended back on September 30th. And then our last request is from the Highway Department. They will, they're asking to use $243,000 of personnel savings against their contracted construction budget for 2020, to alleviate the need for additional supplements in that area. So I'm asking for authorization for these departments to utilize these savings against their other budget lines.
Comments, questions for Kim? I would note that I have had conversations with DJ Boothie regarding their excess in their personnel services, and it appears that maybe likely that was an oversight. There were a couple of positions that were budgeted that were never filled, so that's where the large savings comes in the highway.
I would make a move. One second.
All right, we had a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to item 11. It's authorize the chair to sign the 2021 annual lease agreement between Minnehaha County Historical Society, the Sioux Genealogical Society, and Minnehaha County. Bill Hoskins.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bill Hoskins, Director of the Sioux and Heritage Museums. I'm here today to request authorization for the chairman to sign the annual leases for the Minnehaha County Historical Society that leases space on the first floor of the Old Courthouse Museum, and for the lease of the Sioux Valley Genealogical Society, who leases some space on second floor of the Old Courthouse Museum. These are annual leases. The lease is basically the same as it was last year. In the lease, the county pays for the light heat and custodial surfaces. The societies pay for the phone bills and carry a general liability policy.
Questions? Today, we get to go through a lot of annual leases, and this is the first, so.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks for coming over this morning. All right, that takes us to item 12, authorize the chair to sign the 2021 agreement between Minnehaha County and Southeastern Behavioral Health for qualified mental health professional services at the Juvenile Detention Center. Jamie, thanks for joining us on Zoom.
Good morning, Commissioners. Before you is our annual contract with Southeastern Behavioral Health. They provide emergency mental health services for you upon admission and throughout their state. I'd ask that you approve this contract.
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second. Any comments, questions? Commissioner Barth? Are you just voting?
No, this is-
Oh, okay. So we have a motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Jamie. Next item is item 13, authorize the chair to sign the 2021 agreement between Minnehaha County and Lutheran Social Services of South Dakota for Evening Report Center services. Jamie, you're up again.
I am. Thank you. This is the annual contract for our Evening Report Center that we utilize as an alternative to secure detention. that we utilize as an alternative to secure detention. The youth are picked up from school or home and brought for the evening, have a meal, homework help, help providing, or help them find employment. It's a good program, very good staff. I would ask that you approve this annual contract.
Would move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Hi, Berger.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is item 14. Consider a motion to approve the ambulance license application review, renewals for 2021 and 2022. Jason Gierman, good morning.
Good morning. Jason Gierman, Minnehaha County Emergency Management. I'm here today to, for the approval for the 2021 licensing for ambulances. They have all submitted their applications. There's not much that has changed with amongst the ambulances. The zones are the same. It should be noted that Dr. Luther does quality assurance throughout the year. And this is, it look, to be done a little more efficiently in the past due to the electronic versions that are done. We have had a difficult time this year due to the, obviously COVID and having meetings. Ambulances have been extremely busy. But we expect to resume the governance meetings again in the beginning of the year. So just requesting your approval for the ambulance licenses.
Any questions this morning?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, vote, please.
Hi, Berger.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth. Benega. Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. That takes us to item 15. Consider a motion to appoint two candidates for a five-year term to the Planning Commission Board. Scott Anderson, good morning.
Morning. Scott Anderson, Planning Director. And as you indicated, there are two terms of planning commissioners that will expire at the end of the month. And as we typically do, I worked with the Commission Office. And Craig, do we put the word out to all the media and other areas on our website that we had these positions available? And we advertise it for about a month, more or less. And we had two candidates that reapplied. Our existing planning commissioners or our current planning commissioners, Bonnie Duffy and Mike Ralston, reapplied for another five-year term. For those at home, the Planning Commission consists of a board of, a layboard of seven people. Six planning commissioners are appointed by the county commission. And then we have one county commissioner that serves on that board for a year at a time. So both Bonnie and Mike Ralston are, Bonnie Duffy and Mike Ralston are in the audience. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. And the, the two candidates are here.
Commissioner Karski.
No questions, just a great big thank you. The Planning Commission does a lot of the heavy lifting when it comes to this stuff and vetting and taking care of stuff. And we don't always agree. But that's why we have the process the way we do. But I just want you to know my appreciation for the work that you guys do. Thank you. And just, and Commissioner Barth, you've done a long, long haul on this commission. And thank you for that, too, for the planning commission work.
Anything else?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Hi, Berger.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you both for coming here this morning. And I just, I think we all would echo Commissioner Karski's comments. I know people sometimes say, you know, thanks for serving on the county commission. That's a thankless job. Well, I think that your job is the hardest and most thankless job. But it's so important for us all to be able to have an opportunity to settle disputes between neighbors in a, in a way that makes it a better place to live for everyone. So thank you. It's a lot of work and we really appreciate it. All right. That takes us to item 16, which is a briefing by the Civil Design, Inc. on the Bridge Inspection Program. DJ Boothie, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothie, Highway Superintendent. Beginning in 2020, the South Dakota Department of Transportation requires bridge inspection engineers to give presentations to the county commissions for the counties that they're performing the bridge inspections for. We've hired, as you know, Civil Design, Inc. to perform those inspections for us. And so we have Chris Brozek, our, our structural engineer on Zoom here. And he's got a PowerPoint that he's gonna go through overviewing this year's inspection process.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Chris, for coming on Zoom.
Yeah, good morning, Commissioners, and Merry Christmas. Wondering if, it's not allowing me to share my screen currently. Wondering if whoever is currently sharing could pop off and then I can get my PowerPoint popped up here for you guys.
All right, we're working on it right now.
Yeah, so as DJ had mentioned, the DOT is part of our consultant retainer agreement with the South Dakota Department of Transportation. They now require that as part of our retainer agreement, we also not just meet with the Highway Department, but also with commissioners, that we do inspection support so that you guys are up to speed on what the current state of the infrastructure is in the county in terms of bridges on the county highway system.
There it is. Great.
Okay. You guys able to see that okay?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. I will be very brief so I can keep you guys moving. But basically, I want to talk to you guys today about what was completed this year for the county highway bridge inspection program. 195 structures currently on Minnehaha County infrastructure system. And approximately half of those are inspected every year. Half of them being inspected in even years and half of them being inspected in odd years. This year, we had 91 structures inspected in 2020, mainly east of the I-29 corridor. And 85 of those structures were inspected that were existing. Of those 85, 12 currently have a weight posted restriction on them. And we also had six new structures that were constructed, replacing an old structure or a brand-new structure altogether. And we did initial inspections on those to get them into the system. CDI currently contracts with the South Dakota Department of Transportation to perform bridge inspections for the county. And then as part of your guys' agreement with the state, you pay the 20% match on our contract. So a, a bridge is classified as any structure or box culvert that exceeds 20 foot in length. So anything that does meet that criteria would be on our inspection list. And so anything less than 20 foot in length, such as a smaller box culvert or a smaller structure, we are not required to inspect as part of this program. Bridges are inspected typically every 24 months and box culverts every 24 to 48 months, depending on their overall condition and the amount of fill placed over that, that culvert. In addition to the inspection, we also do load rating analysis as necessary to update any strength requirements of the, of the structure. It, I'll talk about the necessary fieldwork and office work involved with the inspections. And then provide a brief summary of the meeting we had with the Highway Department and also recent bridge improvement grant assistance. Just a real overview of the structures we inspected this year. As, as I mentioned before, mainly east of the I-29 corridor, all the yellow highlighted structures are existing structures. And all of the green structures highlighted are new structures on the infrastructure system. As I said, 85 existing structures were inspected. 12 of those structures have current load restrictions on them. We did have one structure this year that we found had some additional deterioration and some cracking and corrosion. And that warranted a strength reduction and a reduced load posting from 29 tons and 48 tons to an 18 and 30 ton restriction on this structure. And that has been updated by the, by the Highway Department. All the other structures that currently don't have a load posting on them, they're adequate for legal loads. None of those had to be posted this year, which is a very good thing. Then, as I mentioned, the county also had six new structures constructed this year. And these are just a picture of the completed structure at various locations throughout the county. Overall, the structures turned out very well. And the contractors that the county had did an excellent job. Now briefly, just going to kind of an overview of what we do for the county in terms of the inspection. That starts with fieldwork onsite at each structure location. First, we'll start looking at the roadway approaches, the signage, any drainage issues, and document those. Then we'll start getting on to the actual structure itself, looking at the overall concrete deck system, the bridge rail, and also perform a deck delamination survey to determine if there's any issues going on with the current deck and, and if any repairs are necessary. Then we'll start going from top to bottom, looking at the overall superstructure, then the substructure components, and finally, the channel profile and, and areas where there may be any scour prone areas and monitor those for any changes due to scour, which as we saw last year, was a unique year. And did see a lot of changes last year. But luckily, this year, things were much quieter and ended up with very minimal change from, from previous years. And then after we get all that fieldwork documented, we bring it back to the office and we generate a more formalized report for the county highway department so that they're able to take the data that we gather and have that in more of a report form so they know what's necessary for any repairs, any minor revisions to signage, things like that. And then they know what can be done out in the field with their staff. So here's just an example of a couple of sheets pulled from an inspection report just to show you kind of what that final format might look like. And then here again, just a few more snaps from the inspection report to give you an idea of what we provide to the Highway Department. We have plenty of photos that we provide with any defects so we can monitor any changes. And the center photo there is an example of a deck delamination survey that shows areas where the deck is, is starting to pull away from the reinforcement and where we might be starting to see a chloride contamination of the deck itself. And then the last on the right is a panel profile where we get measurements of the existing channel. And that way, we can monitor any changes in the channel bed and also monitor any areas where there may be excessive scour where repairs or mediation may be necessary. Following all that, then we also put together a summary that really, in a nutshell, condenses all the information for the Highway Department that breaks down each structure location when it was inspected, any current postings or updated load posting requirements, and then also all the recommended repairs. And we sat down with the county highway department. And we do this every year. But this year, we did it on November 24th and went through each structure in detail and explained any, any more prominent repair work that may be necessary or mitigation work to prevent any further deterioration. Finally, we, we've also been assisting Minnehaha County with the Bridge Improvement Grant application assistance. As you guys are aware, the Highway Department was approved three preliminary engineering grants earlier this year, back at the end of August, and currently working on hydraulic analysis of those three projects. And the county is also planning to submit two preservation grants, which involve doing major rehabilitation to an existing structure to extend its service life. And those are due to the South Dakota Transportation Commission by January 2nd. And the county is planning to submit two of those structures as listed. Last thing I'll say is overall, the county, you know, is doing a very good job of their infrastructure and very proactive with their maintenance and the repairs that are being made to the structures. And we're seeing benefits of that year after year with the inspection program. And continuing to do that will prove beneficial to the county. So with that, if there are any questions, I'm happy to, to take them at this time.
Questions for Chris this morning? Commissioner Heiburger.
Just a comment. Chris, thanks so much for the report. It was very, it's probably superficial, but it seemed very in-depth to me. And it was actually a really good report. So thank you for that.
Other comments or questions?
Thank you.
Commissioner Benega.
Chris, the six new structures that were done in 2020, do we have a record of when those were originally put in and how long they've lasted?
Yes, the county highway department should have record of that. And I just don't have the years in front of me currently. But the previous inspection reports would have that data. And also, the, the South Dakota Department of Transportation would have, would have that information. I will note that one of the structures was a brand-new structure that was part of the Veterans Parkway construction. That's, that structure's on 60th Street North, just west of Veterans Parkway. So that was a brand-new structure.
Okay. If possible, I'd like to have that information just to kind of see what a life expectancy of a bridge is and what we expect out of it.
So DJ, you got that? Okay, thank you. Other questions this morning? So in general, Chris, I would agree with Commissioner Heiburger. I thought it was a help, really helpful report. The one thing, one deficiency I noted is that we had a couple of interns inspect culverts a few years ago. And they came back with really amazing pictures of spiders. And you didn't have any of those. So I was disappointed about that. Just, you know, you said that our highway, our bridge system is generally in good repair. Does, and can you just comment about how it compares to other counties that you do similar inspections for?
Certainly. So you, you know, you, you guys as a county have a much higher frequency of structures. You know, with 195, you have a lot more to maintain than maybe the average county. But what I will say is, your guys' structures overall just are in an overall much better condition because you've been so proactive in doing replacement structures when they're necessary to get structures that have passed their service life and are in need of a new structure. in need of a new structure. Also, with that being said, you know, having higher ADTs in your county, there is a higher demand for, you know, not having structures posted. So comparing your county though to others, you are well ahead of the curve, definitely.
All right. Thank you very much. Well, we appreciate the work that you've done with the highway department. We appreciate the work the highway department has done to be proactive, to keep the citizens of our county safe. I think it's one of the things that since I've become a county commissioner, I'm much more aware. I think every time I drive over a bridge, one, how much did this thing cost for somebody to build? And then two, has somebody looked at it recently? Am I safe driving across this? And generally in Minnehaha County, I don't worry about the safety, but I am a little more aware of the cost. So thank you very much. We appreciate your work, appreciate the work for the highway department as well. All right.
I have a question for everyone.
Yeah, you as well. Thank you. Okay, that takes us to item 17, which is to authorize the chair to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and Carroll Institute for interim detox services. Carrie Benz. Carrie, you are here in person. I was like, I wonder if she's on Zoom. Good morning. You're here today. You've been working hard on this, so we appreciate all the work that you've done to bring us to this point.
Okay, good morning. Carrie Benz, Human Services Director for Minnehaha County. So before you today is an agreement that's been drafted between Carroll Institute and Minnehaha County. We started drafting this as a means to address and in response to the provider, the current provider of services in the county detox center, ARMOR, and their contract is ending the end of December of this year. And so the new vendor will not be providing that service to detox, so we needed to find a provider that would be willing to do that. And of course, it really kind of even goes back just a little bit further because detox originally was supposed to be moving into the LINK, the Community Triage Center, which was initially set to open at the end of this year, and because of COVID and a few other things, that's been put paused. And so construction is being started, and so we're a little behind schedule in that. So that being said, since that move was delayed, we needed to now find a vendor that was willing to provide the services for the detox center so that in this interim, before the LINK opens, we would have someone that would provide the services and we could maintain the detox being open. So when that all transpired, I began discussions and engaged in having some strategic planning sessions with Carroll Institute. And just as a side note, Gary Tushen and Tiffany Butler are both here. They're with Carroll Institute, so they're here to answer questions later if you'd like. I started having conversations with them because obviously they are a huge provider of services within our community and address this population as well. So in our strategic planning, we pulled together the police department, the jail team, a number of county team members, and really started looking at the impact that this would have on our community if A, we didn't have detox, and B, what does it need to look like in this interim so that we can continue to provide the best service. So in those discussions, we really determined that it would be best for us to move detox out of the Public Safety Building where it's been for a number of years now. And we've all admitted that it's not the ideal location for a service such as detox. And so we really started talking about how we could, where we would move it and what it needed to look like. And Carroll Institute stepped up once again and identified that New Horizons, which is a building that they also operate, that is right on their properties by the arch on Spring Avenue, that it would be good to move this, the detox center, to that place, to that address. And so Gary and Tiffany took that information to their board, and of course, obviously, their board batted around, offered some challenges, asked a lot of great questions, and we then assumed meeting again and tried to resolve all those issues and came upon this agreement that's before you today. In the agreement, you'll notice that obviously, we've tried to address all of the concerns and questions that their board had, certainly tried to address it from the county's perspective. According to this agreement, you'll note that we would have the move take place from the current detox location up to the New Horizons building on December 28th, which is a Monday. We decided that that would be the best day for this to take place primarily because it allows us to have a few days of operation before the holiday and then not having a lot of staff there and present to be able to address any challenges or questions or concerns that may be there. The agreement is a month-to-month. Initially, it's, we've identified January through March, and then thereafter, it would be month-to-month with a 30-day notice to quit the contract or to have it come to a close. As for staffing, all of the staffing, you'll notice, become a staff member of Carroll Institute. And our accreditation, Carroll Institute maintains a high level of standard and accreditation themselves, so our accreditation with the state would continue without question, and that's already been approved through the state. So if you approve this agreement, then our accreditation would be maintained until then the LINK would be opened, and then the provider through the LINK would assume their own accreditation for that. Probably the biggest question that's been there is the financial piece. Obviously, it doesn't come without a fee. And so Carroll Institute put together a budget, and it's $126,480 for the eight beds for the 93 days. Obviously, we figured it for that initial timeframe, because at that time, when we really started this, we weren't certain as to when the LINK would be open. It was, they talked about March, April, I think it's even questionable now is May. And so Carroll Institute has agreed that if we keep it at that 30-day month-to-month contract, it allows us some latitude in that. So to cover that cost, Commissioner Karski, obviously being on the board of the LINK, brought it up to the board and identified that there would be that potential issue, right, that we obviously can't afford to contribute our funds to the LINK and make our initial payment for the year 2021, our initial payment there, and then continue to operate detox as well, and then having a dual expense, a double expense. So it was discussed with that board, and the board meets again this coming Thursday, and the discussion will take place that it would identify that the county would not make its initial payment to the LINK as a stakeholder, but it would rather than focus those funds and re-channel those back so that detox would continue to operate, and we could be then addressing those monies for this contract. So with that, if you have questions, I'm open to questions, or if you have any questions that you'd like to ask Gary or Tiffany, I'm certain that they would be willing to come up and talk as well.
Commissioner Karski?
Just going to add additional comments. Thank you very much, Carrie. I know this has been a lot of work for you, and it wasn't anticipated, and Carol Muller's really been involved too in pushing the issue. And we got it done.
We did.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. And Gary, Tiffany, thank you. Carroll Institute, believe it or not, there's not a lot of businesses clamoring to provide medical services to detox. And so it very much appreciated that you were able to work this out with your board and get this done. It's a very much-needed service. And our current detox, the people are fantastic. The location has been described as deplorable. So I'm sure we're all ready for a change that way, and especially to move into the LINK. And kind of going back to the timeframe, I believe we're having a construction issue with doors and frames and getting things to fit properly, so that's kind of delayed it. And when you're getting stuff manufactured with COVID and timelines and so forth, everything's constantly moving around. Regarding the budget, at the last LINK board meeting, I brought this issue up. Avera will be providing the contract for all the services in the LINK, including medical detox. Technically, their contract hasn't started yet, and it won't start until the LINK is opened up. So we're just moving the ball back with the budget is what we're doing. And the board understood that, and we didn't take any formal action on it, but you know, there was consensus. I'm going to ask for formal action at the Thursday board meeting so that everything's in agreement. So you know, is there a little bit of additional cost to the county? About $20-some thousand, I believe. So but we have no, after December 31st, we have no choice. Even if we didn't have the LINK in the timeframe the way it is, we'd have to be doing something.
Other comments or questions? Commissioner Benega?
First of all, thank you for the partnerships. It's just an awesome way for us to do business. Just a quick question. In the paragraph three, it says that there's stakeholders, city of Avera, Sanford and Sanford. Is there two different Sandfords, or is that?
No, nope. Just one. Just the local one.
Be the county in there.
Well, I read through it, and frankly, that's the only thing I saw. Thank you for...
I'd just say thank you to Carrie and her staff and Carroll Institute too, because this is, Carrie's been working on this for months, but it kind of came up as a surprise, and she's been, remained calm through the whole situation and done her best to try to keep us all on track of what's going on. So thank you, Carrie. It was a lot of work.
Honestly, I really have to take my hat off to Carroll Institute because without them, it wouldn't happen.
It is the reason that this is a great place to live, is that community partners are willing to step up when they don't have to, to fill this important need. So Gary?
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. Gary Tushen, Executive Director, Carroll Institute. Just to kind of give you a sense for how this whole process worked from our perspective, first and foremost, our Board of Directors and our overall staff are very appreciative of the commission's focus on public health. And that really came into play for us specifically this past March, April, and May, when we had a significant outbreak. Carrie and her staff stepped up the plate, which was sponsored by you folks as far as temporary housing for those people that we're dealing with, with COVID. We would have been stuck. We didn't have any options. So we called upon the county, and you guys stepped up for those three months, which assisted us in getting through that period and then getting those folks back engaged in the services. So when we discussed this at the board level, that was the first thing we talked about, is how you folks did what you needed to do, and that's your commitment to public health. We need to do what we can do in assisting you in that manner. So when Carrie came to us, she's a pretty darn good negotiator, by the way. She posed this, and Tiffany Butler, my Director of Operations, and I, after she left, we didn't ponder this as a problem. We pondered this as a possibility to be responsive and do the best thing we could for the community. We know once the LINK is going to open up, you know, it's addressing many things that this community needs, not the least of which is timely responsiveness in services. So while it was touch and go for some board members, overall, it was just an easy decision for us to make. So we'll do the best we can as long as we're needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Are there any other questions?
I would make a motion to approve the agreement.
Second?
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks to all of you. There's so much that happens behind the scenes where people just do the right thing, and I just wish we could get that message out more about how many times people here in our community are just make the right decision and then try to figure out how to get that accomplished. So we appreciate you guys making the right decision here and partnering with us on this important service. So thank you. All right. That takes us to item 18, which is to authorize the chair to sign the 2021 Coroner/Medical Examiner Agreement between Minnehaha County and Dr. Kenneth Snell. Craig?
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. This is the first of a handful of annual contract renewals that take place. Dr. Snell has been the coroner as well as medical examiner for Minnehaha County for a number of years. And so the total budget for this contract is $420,545. That includes a fee for coroner, a fee for medical examiner, and an expense estimate for this budget. Dr. Snell has generally been quite accurate in the budget estimates year to year. Would be happy to answer any questions, otherwise would request your approval.
Any comments or questions?
Move approval.
Second?
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Craig, item 19, authorize the chair to sign the 2021 lease agreement with Metro Communications.
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office again. Metro Communications leases space in the Public Safety Building and has for a number of years. The commission provided direction several years ago to have an annual escalator that would be tied to the Midwest Urban CPI Index. That would bring the rate for 2021 to $11.88 per square foot. Total value of that contract is $51,036.48. That will be paid in monthly installments of 425304.
Questions? Comments?
Move for approval.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to item 20, authorize the chair to sign the 2021 agreement between Minnehaha County and Southeastern Behavioral for Mobile Crisis Team Services.
The Mobile Crisis Team has been a project that Minnehaha County has partnered with Southeastern Behavioral Health on also for a number of years. This is an annual contract that runs January 1 to December 31st. The services that Southeastern provides are coordinated with law enforcement in an effort to help people be able to de-escalate crisis situations so they can remain at home rather than being placed on involuntary commitment, which is better for the individual and better for the county as well. The contract details remain the same as all previous years with a flat fee of $5,000 in administrative expenses, and then the rest of the agreement is paid for by an hourly rate that would really depend on volume.
Questions?
Just going to make a comment. This project has been probably, or program probably started about eight or nine years ago, I believe, and it started out as kind of a part-time project and quickly grew into a full-time program, and it has saved peoples from going to jail or being hauled off from their home. It has been such a good program for the people in their crisis situations. And then as an afterthought, it has saved the county a tremendous amount of money too. So it's really been a good program, and now they're replicating similar types of things across the state of South Dakota.
Experience satisfaction rates from utilizers of the services as well as law enforcement remain consistently high. Those are noted in the monthly reports that Southeastern provides.
Correct. Any other comments or questions? All right. I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Takes us to item 21, authorize the chair to sign the 2021 contract between Minnehaha County and the Sioux Falls Area Humane Society.
The contract returns for the animal control contract here run from January 1 to December 31st. The dollar amounts all remain the same as budget utilization over the past two to three years has remained steady in terms of not getting close to the total dollar amount for the contract. So therefore, terms are remaining the same for 2021.
Questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Bar?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item 22, it's a sign of renewal agreement between Minnehaha County and the city of Sioux Falls for detox services. Craig Dewey?
Yes. Good morning. This is the last contract that I have before you today. It is a contract with the city of Sioux Falls and the county for providing detox services. This is another longstanding agreement. However, with the LINK opening up, which was referred to in a previous item, Minnehaha County will have detox transition to the LINK. In the interim, though, detox still needs to be provided to the city, or it doesn't need to be provided, but that's been the practice. And so this contract is both for the 2020 and 2021 fiscal year for the rolling dollar amount. So in 2021, whenever the LINK does open, we'll be able to tie that up with the last month being paid on a prorated basis.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. And then the item 23 is to authorize the chair to sign the 2021 Ambulance Quality Assurance Director Agreement for Rural Ambulance Services between Minnehaha County and Dr. Jeff Luther.
Good morning. Craig Dewey. You must have counted wrong. This is another annual agreement that is being brought forward to you. Dr. Luther has provided quality assurance services for ambulances for a number of years as well, and he has been a very good partner with emergency management. The fee for his contract remains the same as it was in 2020. Again, this is a calendar year agreement for January 1 to December 31st next year, and it is paid in 12 equal monthly installments. Would be happy to answer any questions, otherwise would request your approval.
Comments? Questions? Motion?
Move approval. Second.
Motion and a second. All right. Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. That takes us to liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports this morning? Commissioner Heiburger?
I'm going to throw out two of them. This past week, Commissioner Karski and I went to SDACC, South Dakota Association of County Commissioners Board of Directors meeting. I would say there was nothing earth-shattering going on, really just to let you know that we were there, unless Commissioner Karski has something else he wants to add when I'm done. And the other was that the mayor, Sioux Falls mayor, set up a phone conversation for the Sioux Empire Leadership Council to listen to the mayor from Colorado Springs in Colorado to just talk to us about what has happened in Colorado and specifically his county since marijuana was legalized. his county, since marijuana was legalized. I did give each one of the commissioners a copy of a speech that he gave at another place. And the content of the phone call is pretty much mirrors what's in that speech. I found it very interesting. And I think we're all in, going to be on quite the little ride here as we figure out some of the takeaways. One, he said that the tax revenue that was generated by marijuana sales does not even come close to covering the social issues that are going to be coming with it. There's several other very good points in his speech that you can catch up on later, so.
Thank you. Other liaison reports? Commissioner Barf.
So we had a CCOG meeting last week of the Board of Directors, and we did a review of the director that gave her a raise. Also, Harold Boar, the longtime fire chief in the Lyons community, who started the fire truck business out there, now known as Rosenbauer, retiring from the fire department at the end of this year. Certainly, the giants in the ambulance on whose shoulders we stand today.
That's very true. Thank you for bringing that up. Other liaison reports? I would just note that Commissioner Barf and I spent the vast majority of yesterday interviewing contractors for the CMAR contract to do the remodel on the extension building and the admin building. We had four great interviews. We did them all via Zoom, which was an interesting experience. And we hope to have a decision that we can bring forward here coming up shortly. And I also wanted to mention that I had an opportunity to attend a meeting that Commissioner Heiburger was very instrumental in putting together to update legislators, legislators on the MacArthur Grants that we have received and all the innovative strategies that have been developed as a result of that. It was a great presentation to our legislators. And I really want to thank Commissioner Heiburger for her leadership in that, and Chief Justice Hellman. Michelle Boyd and the sheriff also spoke. And, you know, I hear, I hear about those things, but I always learn something new every time I listen to the, the great things that are going on and the lives that are being dramatically impacted for the better by that. It's another great instance of people just choosing to do the right thing for folks and finding a way to make that happen. So just wanted to thank, thank you all for that hard work. So, now take, Commissioner Barf.
Yeah, I was on those Zoom calls with you yesterday. I don't think our fellow commissioners appreciate how hard you are working as chairperson. We had six Zoom meetings altogether from 8:30 in the morning until after 4:30 in the afternoon with a break for lunch. But it was, it was a long day. And, you know, you've got another job. You've got a younger family. I'm just over here.
Well, everybody is doing their part. We've all got a lot going on. But it was, it was a good day. I mean, I think we were really fortunate that we had such high-quality contractors that are showing an interest in that work. So, thank you. All right, new business? Any new business? Any old business? All right, hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to recess.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Barf.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We will reconvene about 25 after 10. I can sign all of these agreements before then. So, thank you, everyone.